Good evening, welcome to the Township of Hillsboro Planning Board Meeting. It's June 6, 2019. We all please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2000 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, to the township clerk, and posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsboro Township Municipal Complex. Notice has been provided that this meeting would take place on June 6, 2019, at 7:30 PM at the Hillsboro Township Municipal Complex. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville, Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Depp, Mayor Delcor, Chair Sarachi are absent. Mr. Peazin?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Committeeman Lepany?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here. Next up on the agenda would be the consideration of meeting minutes from April 11, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, all members that are present tonight are eligible to vote on this minute if they were present before voting.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepany?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Okay, next up on the agenda would be, we have a couple of resolutions. So the first resolution is the Mac Development Group Inc., Shell Born Place, File 18 PB-12 MSV. Counsel?
Yes, members eligible to move this resolution and vote, Vice Chairman, yourself, Vice Chairman, Board Secretary Hashtag, Committeeman Lepany, Board Member Wagner, Board Member Scoville, who's not here right now, and Attorney One, Mr. Depp, Sir Jeff Depp. So, we have enough here, we can move that.
So we need a, need a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepany?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Next up on the agenda would be the second one of our resolutions. That would be the Town Center Family Dental, File 18 PB-15 MSPV. For, it says a revote? I guess that was the one we were talking about before. Town Center Dental, which we voted on, but we're gonna vote on again, I guess.
Okay, so just note that those who are eligible to vote and move are yourself, Vice Chairman, Board Secretary Hashtag, Committeeman Lepany, Board Member Wagner, and Board Member Peazin. Mayor Delcor would be eligible, he's not here this evening.
Okay, I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Peazin?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepany?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Okay, so I guess at this time we could ask if there's any business other than the application from the floor this evening, before we get started with the application. I guess if there is none, then we can move on to the application, which is Three Ronson LLC Village Point Hillsboro Center.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman &amp; Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, as the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct an approximately 63,235 square foot, 44-unit multifamily inclusionary building on property located at 645 Route 206 and identified as lots 5.01 and 5.02 in block 200.10. The property is located in the TC Town Center District, which was recently rezoned to permit a single-use multifamily dwelling as part of the existing shopping center. This project is part of the township's Affordable Housing Compliance Plan, and so has a 25% set aside for low and moderate income units. Therefore, the 44 units, 11 will be affordable, and the remaining 33 will be market rate. The existing structure previously approved as a childcare facility will be demolished. The proposed single-use multifamily building is permitted as a conditional use, and as will be demonstrated through the testimony of the applicant's professionals, all of the conditions set forth in the TC District have been met, and so the applicant is also seeking a conditional use permit from the board. In addition, the applicant is also seeking a bulk variance from Ordinance Section 118-113.5E2C, which permits a maximum building height of 45 feet, with the applicant proposing a building height of 48 feet. Finally, the applicant is also seeking three design waivers as follows. From Ordinance Section 188-68E1, which requires 30-foot two-way drive aisles where applicant is providing only 25 feet, this is an existing condition within the shopping center. From Ordinance Section 188-68E1, which requires a minimum parking stall size of 10 feet by 20, and the applicant proposes a minimum parking stall size of 10 feet by 18. And the third is from Ordinance Section 188-68C, which requires a minimum setback of 30 feet for all parking lots to a property line where the applicant proposes 10 feet at the northeast property corner. In support of the proposed development, the applicant will present the expert testimony of Tom Decker, who will provide both engineering and planning testimony, as well as the expert testimony of Larry Appel, the project's licensed architect. In addition, the applicant's traffic engineer, Gary Dean, is in the audience and would be called upon if there's a question raised that only Mr. Dean is qualified to answer. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant is in receipt of the following four reports. One, Mr. Maskey's planning report dated May 22, 2019. Two, the fire marshal's report dated May 23, 2019. Third, T&amp;M's report dated May 31, 2019. And fourth, the environmental commission report dated June 3, 2019. I just want to confirm that that's all the reports that the board has and that we received. And with that, we're actually gonna do it, normally I would call up my site engineer first, but Mr. Decker is gonna be both my engineer and my planner this evening, so we're actually gonna start with the architect. He's gonna describe the building, the facade, the floor plans, discuss the height a little bit, and then, once he's done, Tom will do the site testimony as well as the planning simultaneously as he goes through that.
Okay.
So with that, Mr. Appel, could you please come on up and get sworn in?
You gotta get sworn in, and just take the mic, please. There's another one over there.
Oh, I'm up, sorry.
That's okay.
Can I touch on any of the truth or all truth and not just the truth? Yes, I do. Lawrence, L-A-U-R-A-N-C-E, Appel, A-P-P-E-L, Principal of Appel Design Group Architects, located in Livingston, New Jersey. I have appeared before this board before. I'm happy to give quick qualifications if you would like.
Sure, we'd like to. We'd like that, please.
Okay. I'm Principal of Appel Design Group Architects. I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering and a Master's in architecture. I'm licensed in New Jersey since 1992, also New York, Pennsylvania, as well as NCAR certified. I've appeared before numerous boards, both Hillsboro, Montgomery Township, and other surrounding municipalities as well.
Would you accept his qualifications?
Yes.
As a New Jersey architect?
Yes, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Appel, if you could, we'd like you to describe the elevations and the floor plans of the proposed multifamily on single building.
So, I'd like to start and just give you a little bit of a quick design premise that we started with. Buildings are designed in accordance with the ordinance, and what we have done initially was we created four separate building pods. So they're really independent buildings that are attached, but they, this allowed us, the strategy allowed us a couple of benefits. First, the strategy, we have separate entries to each of these buildings. Each of the building floor plans will serve, and the entrances will serve four units per floor maximum.
Sorry, may I interrupt for a second? Are we entering anything as an exhibit here?
I can, if we want to, maybe what I can do, would you like me to tag any exhibits? Because the drawings that were submitted to you, would you like me to tag that as an exhibit?
Counsel?
If you're gonna be using a, or a testimony.
Okay, so let's start with that, is that, as first to identify, the exhibits that I'll have with me this evening, right now, are going to be the package that you have. They're drawings that are all dated 3/1/2019. They consist of one, two, three, four, five, six drawings. C-01, A01, A02, A03, A04, A05. These are identical to the ones that are in your package. Is this A1?
Correct, that would be mark A1. Yes, thank you.
And then what we will have is, I will, I have two renderings. The first rendering is a color rendering of the building from the courtyard dated 6/6/19. Why don't we call this A2? And I'll, no, that's the other one. There's two. And I have small copies that I can pass out as well. So that's a, just a view of the apartments will be A2.
This one?
A1?
Yes. No, that'll be A2.
What's this one?
A3. Because these drawings are A1. And then I have a second rendering, which is a color rendering of a building in photographic context, and that's a view from the existing shopping center or along 206. The viewpoint, I can show you these when I come up in testimony, that will be exhibit A3.
So Counsel, you're all right with these, all these documents?
I'm fine, and he's describing them well enough for me to record.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll skip to drawing A3, which is from the architectural drawings. That's a drawing number A-03, which is exhibit A1. And this shows that there are, going from left to right, four pods, each with an entry that, so the building is created of four smaller blocks. And these blocks allowed us to be flexible with the design. It allowed us to create flexibility with getting private garages at the rear. It allowed us to create an amenity courtyard, and all of these building entrances have entries facing this courtyard. In addition, that all of these building pods, and there's four of them, each will have both a front and a rear entrance, and this provides an easier way of both getting to the amenity or this entry courtyard, as well as getting to parking that is surrounding the project on each of the sides. So, I'm going to switch now to the rendering, if I can, and talk a little bit about the materials for this project, and then I'll go in specifically on each of the architectural elevations. I wanted people to first see what we're proposing. This is a representation of the building with the courtyard to the right. This is exhibit?
A2.
A2. And the primary facade materials are brick veneer, fiber cement siding, and the fiber cement siding has two different treatments. One is along the base of the building, is horizontal flatboard style, and the other is vertical board and pattern. That's the lighter color area at the third floor of the building. We also have trim, which is either going to be composite or PVC. Accent architectural panels and trim, that is the areas that are white over the brick. So if you see where the building entrance is toward the courtyard in the distance, above the brick, we have elected to use an architectural panel and trim detail to highlight the gable roof. We have accent metal roofing on the low entrance portico roof. These portico roofs have columns on either side. We have a pitched main roof with dimensional asphalt shingles. And decorative pre-finished metal garage doors at the rear of the building, I'll show these on the architectural elevations. All these materials were selected, both because they were approved materials that were in the ordinance, as well as their quality materials. We're looking for something that is going to be low maintenance, so that this building looks as it does when it's originally constructed in the years to come. So the building will require very little maintenance because of the materials that are selected. I'll go back to the architectural elevations, and I'll walk you through very quickly on Drawing A-01 shows we have an east side elevation and a north side elevation. The north side elevation is a rear-facing element that has the private garages. These are private garages that will be designated to a specific unit as part of rental.
Just for context, when you say the north side, that would be facing the Nelson's Corner Shopping Center, correct?
There's actually, if you look at the proposed ground floor plan, it'll tag each side of the building.
Which sheet is that?
So that's drawing A-03. So it indicates the elevations A, B, C, and D along the building footprint. So you were saying?
Yeah, when you were saying, when you were referencing the north elevation, I'm saying is that faces basically Nelson's Corner Shopping Center, correct?
I believe so, because I'm not sure I know it as Nelson's Corner.
The shop, right.
Okay, I believe you're correct.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So, going back to the elevations on drawing number A-01, this shows what was pictorially and artistically shown on the rendering, but shows scale drawings. In particular, we have on the upper right-hand corner keynotes which indicate each of the materials. I've told you broadly where all the materials, or a listing of all the architectural materials. The one thing I did not talk much about was the balconies, and we've used balconies as architectural elements with peaked roofs on there, so it was done for, as amenity for residents, as well as to provide some architectural distinction for the building. These are, will be open, they will have a column at the corner anchoring the balcony, and then we'll have pre-finished architectural railings that are, that will accent both in color and architectural form.
And Larry, if you could, just touch on the height Fahrenheit that we're requesting. It's a 45-foot is the maximum, we're going to 48 feet. I believe that has something to do with the pitch of the roof and the requirements under the ordinance?
That's correct. So, the building height, if you look toward the left side of the elevation, there's a dimension that shows 31 feet from the approximate average grade to the eve of the main roof. So, what was done in here is we designed this building, there are topo changes along the building, and that was one of the reasons why we developed this plan with these separate pods. It gave us a little bit more flexibility to deal with the grade around the building. And then, what we did is we designed the building with standard nine-foot floor heights. We designed for typical truss depth, and then we put, capped the building with a pitch roof. And the pitch roof in here needs to be by ordinance, six-on-12 for a hip roof design, which is what this is. But in addition, all of the accent gables are 10-on-12, whereas the ordinance, I believe, permits going nine-on-12. So, this is something that we thought architecturally made sense. The building, when you tie into average grade and you do these calculations, which the site engineer can touch on as well, we ended up exceeding the 45-foot maximum height by three feet, so it's 48 feet. Now, we can lower this roof, so if we take this roof, which is six-on, right now is a six-on-12 roof, and we were lower it a de minimis amount to five-on-12, we can achieve a conforming building height. Our recommendation would be to leave the roof as designed at the six-on-12. Proportionally, I believe it looks good, and it functions well. Pitch roofs are kind of funny, because the perception of the height is that you really don't read the same height for a pitch roof as well as a flat roof building. So, when we look at a building with a pitch roof, many ordinances would address that the height is actually measured to the midpoint. And actually, when we were going through your ordinance, is the architectural and site design overlay zone actually has some language in here under the definition of eve, where it says that to promote pitch roofs, building height to be measured to the eve. So that was our original thought in here. We were notified that height should be measured to the ridge line, not to the eve line, so that's what we did. So, that's what kind of kicked us from what we thought was originally conforming to requiring a small variance for building height. In our opinion, I believe that the proposed roofs are proportional with the design, also with the surrounding retail center. And when we look a little bit more at the renderings, I can show how this building integrates itself with the center. So, I think maybe, why don't we switch back to the courtyard rendering?
That would be exhibit A3?
That would be A2.
No, that's the other one.
The front, well, this is the courtyard.
Right, A3.
This is A2.
Okay.
Excuse me? In just a moment. So, going back on here, as you can see, when you read these drawings, is that the roof kind of fades away from your view. And this type of roof, the impression height-wise, you would probably read the proportion of the roof more than you would read that the ridge that so far set into the, into the center of the building perceived that height. So, again, it's our recommendation to leave this, but there is, if the board wishes, there is opportunity to make this conforming if we were to get some type of relief with regard to the architectural and site design overlay zone.
I mean, I don't think it's unsightly, but does it put us in a, you know, conundrum with other projects, or in terms of the sightline, or just case-by-case type of thing?
It's case-by-case.
Case-by-case, so. I mean, I remember when we were talking in the conceptual design, it's really not blocking anything, it's in back of the other building, so.
Correct, and actually, this is a perfect time to bring out the rendering A3, because you can see, what we have done is, we have gotten, taken a photograph of the front. This is from 206 facing toward the corner where we're proposing the building to be, and it shows the existing retail buildings on the left and the right side, the existing parking lot, and our proposed building in the distance. So, our opinion is that you can see the building, but it does not tower over or overscale or overshadow this area of the retail, and I don't think it diminishes any of the character and flavor or design aspects of the retail building itself. In fact, what we tried to do is make sure that some of the elements that were present in the retail building were carried forward, and we used some of that as inspiration architecturally.
Okay, and if you, Larry, maybe perhaps touch on the unit count and floor plans a little bit?
So, just for everyone's, there's a summary on the cover page of our architectural submission that shows the building units and matrix. I can go through very quickly to explain what that is. There are a total of 44 units, 33 market rate, and 11 COA affordable units. I can go through the breakdown of each of these, but it's somewhat clearly delineated, so unless...
Well, for the record, though, and for people that might be listening, so just quickly to say.
Okay. So, for the breakdown of the buildings, we have, for the, first, the bedroom count, we have 18 one-bedroom units. Seven of these are one-bedroom with den. Two are affordable, and nine are one-bedroom market. We have 24 two-bedroom units. Seven of these are affordable, 17 market, and we have two three-bedroom units. Both of these are affordable, so the only three-bedroom units are those that were required to be, were required by the COA distribution ordinance. And the distribution of these bedrooms is consistent with your ordinance as well. There were metrics for limiting the ratio of the bedrooms in the project. The floor plans, as I mentioned, are set up with private garages on the ground floor, and there are apartments and what we call stacked flats in and around four units per floor serviced by a common corridor. If we shift to page A4, this is a proposed second floor, and it kind of shows how units are arranged for per floor sharing a stairway. Each of these apartment units, and we have blowups on the next page, on page 85, we show blowups of both the COA units as well as the market units. And it should be noted that each of the buildings, or each of the units, have independent heating and cooling, and have their own closed dryers. So, these are self-contained units, there's no common utilities, they're all provided for each in a separate dwelling unit.
And if you could, maybe actually just touch on some of the comments that were in Dave Maskey's report with respect to the green technology requirements?
One thing I'll just, I'll also add, the market unit sizes range between 950 square feet and 1,250 square feet, and the affordable unit sizes also range between 950 and 1,250 square feet. So, one of the items for compliance was green technology, and we had some questions with regard to what the intent of the ordinance was, and we spoke to Mr. Maskey about this. After looking at this very carefully, what we are proposing for compliance with the green technology is to design...
I'm sorry to interrupt one more. This is page six of my memo, number 10, comment number 10?
Yes. And actually, I can go back and go for some of the other items on the report as well. We are proposing to design... We are proposing to design the building in accordance with the Energy Star multi-family new construction program. So people are familiar with Energy Star appliances, but there's a bigger picture, and there's a whole Energy Star program. Energy Star has been one of the leaders pioneering energy efficiency. And whatever was Energy Star yesterday becomes code tomorrow. So it's sort of, the code has almost chased Energy Star. And we use Energy Star as one of those platforms, which is code plus or enhancement over code. This is a whole building green design program. It calls for very similar requirements to many of the provisions that would come with other programs such as LEED or the ICC National Green Building Standard. The Energy Star requirements are, again, above and beyond those required by the building code. And as such, Energy Star actually qualifies as, and is permitted to be recognized as a code compliance pathway. So in other words, that because it's above the code standard, by applying, by utilizing the Energy Star program, it means that you satisfy building code with regard to energy compliance. So the Energy Star program is designed to enhance quality, comfort, durability, and energy efficiency. Some highlights here for what we're proposing is we would be engaging the consulting firm of Riverio to perform energy modeling, program compliance inspections and commissioning. They're certified energy raider, LEED certified, and pretty much certified in almost any of the energy programs and green building programs as well. In addition to providing assistance with compliance, they do provide third-party inspections of the construction. That's a requirement of the Energy Star. So it's not just that we say this is going to be done, but there's actually inspections and compliance in order to do this. And in addition, the state also provides inspections for an additional layer of quality control. So the program provides for mandatory or mandated requirements for efficiency, for heating and cooling equipment, ductwork, requirements for building envelope design and performance for doors and window performance, water heater efficiency, requires programmable thermostats, mandated requirements for all of the appliance efficiencies. So that would be your refrigerators, clothes dryers, washers, ceiling fans, et cetera. And this is actually an item that is specified in the ordinance for compliance as well. Also, requirements for energy efficient lighting, requirements for water management and water efficiency. And again, this is field inspection, is provided by third-party raters. So it's not just that we're self-monitoring this, it's that there is a requirement. And one of the reasons a requirement is it's a recognized program, and the program is, you submit to the state, and by complying with all of these standards in here, and you can also achieve, and by raising the efficiency of the project, you can achieve some rebates as well. So I have with me some of the program literature and checklist and program requirements. I'm happy to distribute this if it's, if the board or any of the professionals would like to see this. But our opinion is that this is a very appropriate type of response for the green design requirements.
Mr. Maskey, may we ask if you are in agreement with your question?
Well, I was just going to say, if I understand your testimony, you're saying that you will comply with the green technology requirements?
Yeah, I think so, yes, correct.
Okay.
So Mr. Maskey had another question right under that with respect to the architectural and site design overlay zone, with respect to the roof materials and your facade materials. Can you say how we're addressing those, if we comply?
So the first is that one of the questions with regard to the roofs and roof materials, we are complying. All of these are pitch roofs with overhanging eaves, which was a requirement. These are details, vernacular details, very common, traditional vernacular details. So what we're proposing is very conventional with overhanging eaves, gutters, and standard trim. All of the hip roofs currently are shown at six-on-12 roof pitch, and the gable roofs are at 10-on-12. So we believe that we have satisfied that portion of the ordinance. In addition, the facade treatments and facade materials, keep in mind that these buildings don't have a front and a back. We've taken the design of the building, wrapped it around the courtyard, and wrapped it around all sides of the building. So the only item that is really different on these facades is that facing the rear and the parking area, they have some private garages. And that was done as an amenity for residents and also as a balancing point to get some additional parking for the residents. One of the other items that was brought up in the ordinance was how the portico entry elements with the decorative columns and the metal roofs, and we believe we are conforming with regard to that. So I think that the, Mr. Maskey's report of 522, I think we've addressed the architectural items. Item three, let's say 3.2 was the height variance, and I think we have provided some discussion and testimony on that. Item seven, signs. So I have a new exhibit that I'd like to issue, and we're proposing two project signs.
It's going to be A4 for identification?
Correct. This is our sign drawing. It is called Monument and Directional Signs dated 6/6/2019.
One page.
So there's two items on this drawing. One is a directional sign and one is a monument sign. And when the site engineer gives testimony, he will explain where these are being proposed. The monument sign is intended to provide some identity for this use in this portion of the site. So we kind of created this to have something that feels a little more substantial and something that, but something that's small in scale and it's utilizing the same brick as the, as our building. And so we're looking for something that it was appropriate in both materials, design, compatibility with the proposed architecture, compatibility with the existing center, and also appropriate in scale.
Where would the sign go?
Well, I can show on the site, but I was going to recommend that the site engineer, during his testimony, he would indicate why we're proposing the, both the monument sign as well as the directional sign. The directional sign is really a wayfinding sign, just to make sure that somebody coming to the site, whether it be a first responder or a guest, would know exactly where the residential portion of the project is and how to get there efficiently.
Okay.
Fair enough. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Or a comment, really. As the board's aware, major shopping centers such as this one have what we call a sign manual. This shopping center does have a sign manual, has to do with the color and the style of the signs. And any type of signage, you're supposed to be compliant with the sign manual. There have been discussions with this particular applicant over the past about it might be time to upgrade or change that sign manual, the signs out front, et cetera. The reason I bring it up is before we start adding any more signs to this project, and I haven't had a chance to review the compliance with what's proposed here, it really ought to be done in the context of the full sign package for the center, because it is one entity. So I think going forward, we'll let the testimony play out, but I think that we should keep in mind that whatever new signage, and I think it's in my comments and perhaps Mr. Euro's as well, that we need a comprehensive signage package for this site. Obviously, we have residences there now or might have residences there. So I would prefer to see, and this is up to the board, a new sign package for the site. So not that they have to change all the signs now that are there, but going forward, some sense of, all right, this is what the signs will look like going forward. So just a thought.
Does that bring continuity to all the different tenants?
Yeah. Obviously, the stores wouldn't have to take their signs down now, but again, going forward, we're going to have wayfinding signs and signs now apparently for the residences themselves. And perhaps at some near-future date, a proposal for a new freestanding sign out on 206. Might be a good time to get all that into one package.
I don't know whether...
We understand what Mr. Maskey's saying. I think what we, the intent of our exhibit was, he kind of indicated that new directional signage was advisable, so we were trying to address that comment. But we understand that he'd like us to come in with something more formal. I don't know if we have to come to the board for that, or can we work with you on that?
I think, well, depending on how the board goes on this application, they could approve what's being proposed with more detail. Perhaps a condition could be imposed that the sign package for the shopping center at some point would be redesigned to the, for my review and Mr. Euro's review, to make sure it's compliant. You wouldn't have to come back to the board necessarily.
Okay.
That's if it meets with the board's wishes.
Yes, you just have to work with our professionals on that, then.
That's fine. Thank you. Do you have any other comments you wanted to add?
So I think that the location of the signs, I think the engineer would, will be able to show when he's doing testimony with regard to the site plan. And the item number 10 on Mr. Maskey's letter, we've already discussed the green technology requirements. And item number 11, the architectural and site design overlay zone, I think we all also touched on that. So I think as far as the architectural items, I believe I would address these.
Thank you.
Mr. Euro, do you have any questions for the architect?
Yeah, just two questions, some clarification. If you go to exhibit one, which is the main package, sheet A3, with reference to the garages, how are those garages accessed? It appears that there is no internal access from any of the units. Just need clarification from the board, because it is a unique concept.
So what we're proposing in here is that the, most of these garages will not have a, call it an access point to go directly from the garage into the unit. So you would basically park your car, but in most cases, there's actually an overhang right at the front of the garage door. So that, I would say, at least half the doors in here have an overhanging growl protecting someone walking in front of the garage door. And so the idea is that someone would pull their car in, park the car, come out, and then hit the electric control to close it, and then walk into the main entrance. Keep in mind that the ground floors of every one of these buildings must be accessible. In addition to these being accessible, one of the garages will also be accessible, which is not a code requirement, but it is a Fair Housing Act requirement.
Just sort of dovetailing into parking requirements, each garage space, so this is being rented to a unit owner, so they'll be the garage spot and then the driveway spot behind. So technically, they have two spots that will be optimized.
That is correct. When someone, whoever, call it owns the garage, will own the apron surface stall directly in front of it.
Okay, perfect. And then just testimony on the heating and cooling for the units?
Yes.
I notice it looks like all of your HVAC equipment is in a little contained space off of the balcony.
Correct.
Will there be any condenser units placed either outside of grade or on rooftops or anything like that?
So right now, what we're proposing in here for these buildings are what's called a magic pack. So that magic pack is a self-contained furnace and condensing unit in one package. So it will not require for any of the units, any separate condensing units like you have in your homes, like what they call a split system. However, for some of the common area, it may be necessary to have a small, what's, it's a mini-split. So there may be one, to deal with the common area, it may be one small condensing unit to deal with the common area heating and cooling. So that is a very, very small, it's almost like the size of a piece of luggage. It's that small.
No, like PTAC units or anything like in...
There's, we're not proposing any PTAC units or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay, if there's any other questions from the board, otherwise, at this time, we're going to open it to the public. So I need a motion to open it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so at this time, is there anyone from the public that has a question for the architect? Want to come on up, Susan? Just state your name and address and talk into the microphone. You know the routine.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club Road. My first question, the amenity courtyard. To what amenities does that refer? I looked at the picture. I can see some sidewalks and grass. Is there some type of gardening? A bench where people can sit?
The site engineer will talk a little bit about what is being done there landscape-wise. But when I look at its amenity, it was an open space amenity, not intended to be active recreation.
Okay. Any elevators in this building?
There are not.
Okay. The roof dormers that were on the pictures, are those useful or decorative?
They are decorative.
Okay. The accent gables, is that the ones that are over the balconies?
They're both over balconies as well as over the, aligned directly above the entry corridors.
Okay. Are those also decorative, or is that going to make a loft or a cathedral ceiling or anything like that?
There are no lofts proposed in the building.
Okay. The building height variance. You're asking for three feet, 48 feet over the 45 allowed. If that wasn't approved, the only thing that would change would be the roof pitch?
So you said if that were...
If the board chose not to approve that variance and you lost the three feet, the only change would be the pitch of the roof from your description?
That's correct.
Okay. The height of those buildings, oh, good. How does that compare to the height? I saw the picture for a visual in feet. How does that compare to the surrounding commercial buildings that are already in place?
I want to just confirm with a colleague, they're approximately 30 feet to the, so the existing, the existing center...
Use the mic.
I'm sorry.
We're losing the audio. Just use the mic.
The existing, the existing center, so I'm going to switch to the other rendering. So do you see the ridge line of the left retail building and the right retail building are approximately 35 feet? So that, the height over there, if that can give you a comparative, and that's why you see this building is slightly taller than the existing center.
Okay. Looking at this particular picture rendering, the building looks relatively close to the commercial buildings that are already in place, and, well, the people that live there, of course, are... live there, of course, are going to be citizens of Hillsborough. So, those surrounding commercial buildings, what about their hours of operation, lighting, et cetera, for people who are now gonna have their homes next to what is already a commercial site?
So, we do a lot of apartments, and apartments in both urban areas and parts that are mixed use. So, what you're questioning, some people find desirable. In other words, that they find that living closer to an urban center provides the ability to hop right out of your apartment and stop in for a cup of coffee, or other amenities that would be available on a site like this. So, there are certain people, obviously, that would not appreciate that, and certain people who strive for that.
Okay. The 12 garages, I didn't really understand, they're not accessed from a specific unit, but they're, they are assigned to a specific unit, or are they a separate rental? I didn't really understand that concept.
So, what typically happens with these type of garages is that they're assigned and rented to a specific tenant. So, the developer may decide to connect these to specific units, but most likely, what happens is that it's a first-come, first-served, is that if somebody wants a garage, they will, they rent an apartment, and if there's a garage available and they want it, they will also rent as an additional increment that garage space as well.
Are those garages generally assigned to the market rate units, or just varies?
Well, I think it's whoever is going to pay the additional incremental rental cost for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public for this, for this witness? Counsel will just keep it open?
I have a, if I may?
Sure.
A question on the garages. The garages are for rent? They're planning to rent the garages?
My understanding is that the garages would be an additional portion of rental. So, in other words, if somebody's renting an apartment, what would come with that apartment would be surface parking?
It's not additional. My point is, if these garages are for rent, they're not gonna be counted as towards your parking requirement, because if somebody chooses not to rent them, they need to be available to everybody.
Oh, they would be available to everybody. Most of?
My point is, if a person comes and rents one of the units, all 44 of them, and they all decide because it's an extra fee, that they're all gonna park outside. No one's gonna rent one of the garages. You've got, I don't know how many garages, 18 or so?
Wow.
But there's 12 spaces that nobody's using or can use, because they have to pay to use them.
It's an interesting idea that you're, that you're raising in comment. What we've found out in practice, it's just the opposite, is that there's a much higher demand for the garages.
I'm not saying nobody will, but I'm struggling with the concept in terms of, you're required to provide X amount of spaces. In fact, for RSIS 2, depending on the bedroom size, but if you're restricting use of that space to only those people who choose to pay extra to use it, I'm not sure we can count them. Bob?
I would have to agree. That's, it's an interesting scenario.
Usually, garages come with, yeah.
That's actually, I think, a legal issue, and there's nothing in RSIS that even talks about that. So, I don't know how you could make a conclusion on that point.
Well, you're asking for, you're counting those 12 spaces?
Right.
As part of your parking count. And as Mr. Maskey said, suppose all 44 units get rented, and nobody wants to, if there's an extra fee, a premium, to have a garage, they don't want it. So, now, your parking, proposed parking count gets reduced by 12. So, I'd have to look at the numbers and see how that affects. Maybe you did a parking guarantee now, I have one of the numbers, but.
Yeah.
And now, you're putting an extra 12 people into the, because right now, there's not enough parking around the building to begin with, and I'm sure there's gonna be testimony from Mr. Decker that they're gonna use the rest of the shopping center to substantiate the parking requirement. I don't say that it won't happen, but as Mr. Maskey said, if those 12 garages or portion thereof aren't rented, now you're putting an extra six, 12 cars in the main body of the shopping center. It's an interesting scenario, and like, I don't know, maybe they should be tied to certain units. And then, just to piggyback off of that, could somebody in one of the three bedrooms or apartments, may have multiple cars or children, occupy two garage spaces?
Well, those are the co-units, and I doubt they're gonna have the extra money to pay for the parking garage.
I would say almost, if you got to the point where, you know, you have 12 units left, and you haven't rented the garages, then you'd have to?
Give them away.
Give them away, or rent them, well, not rent them, yeah, you'd have to give them away.
In practice, the only thing I can say is that we do work with a number of different developers. We have done private garages on a number of different projects, and usually the feedback that we're getting is that we didn't provide enough garages. We're losing potential renters that are walking away to say that they will not rent here unless they get a garage.
Yeah, but it's not, we're not saying they won't be.
Yeah.
They might be. The last, and again, it's a case-by-case basis, but the last two developments that were approved by this board, the garage came with the unit. Was no, wasn't separated from a unit. X, you know, X amount of units came with a garage.
And whatever the price is, it includes the garage or doesn't include the garage?
It's part of the rent of the unit. It wasn't, it wasn't an add-on.
You can't close it off.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna have to figure that out, in terms of?
Right. I mean, there, overall, there's an extra eight parking spaces that we have extra on the whole site. So, we're talking four spaces. So, perhaps we can, I don't know, you're the architect, is there any way to connect the garage to four of the downstairs units, so then we would resolve this issue?
Well, this is not a design issue.
Yeah, it's not, it's not about physically connecting them, it's making them available. So, if you, if you rent apartment A, it comes with a garage. If you rent apartment B, it does not come with a garage.
Right.
So, there's 12 units that come automatically with the garage.
Right, you just want?
And the space in front of it, obviously.
And that, as long as you, you make four of them have to be assigned, but it doesn't matter which, let's say if it's a two-bedroom, but it doesn't matter?
It's not ideal. You might meet the requirement, but as, as Mr. Euro has pointed out, I believe in his memo, a good deal of your park, your residential parking requirement is in the shopping center parking lot, which is fine. Shared parking is fine, but you're, again, we would like to see you maximize the amount of residential parking adjacent to the residential building.
How does the question I have, the garage, let's say, Katton rents the garage, I don't. He has his car in the garage, and I park in front of his garage. Am I allowed to park there?
So, typically, whoever essentially owns or rents the garage also has the stall right in front of it.
Speaking to the mic, but does?
I apologize. Whoever, whoever owns or rents that garage would also control the stall, the apron or surface stall right in front of it. So, it's a pair.
So, if nobody rents that garage?
That's two spots.
That's two spaces that are empty.
Well, not necessarily, because if, if that garage is not rented, you don't need access to it, then anyone can?
I don't wanna hear "not necessarily." Either it is or it isn't.
Yeah.
I mean, in practice, people will park wherever they want, but if nobody, if somebody chooses not to rent a garage, which comes automatically with the apron space, that's two spaces that are now basically unavailable.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're just gonna assign them to specific units. All right? That'll resolve the issue. That can be a condition of the approval.
Okay.
It closes the gap.
Yep. All right, so you were right with that, Mr. Maskey?
Yep.
Okay.
Not me, it's you guys.
Yeah, no, but the concept.
As long as they're not an add-on or an extra, right, they're assigned, you rent apartment A, it comes with a garage and an apron space.
So, that'll be 12 assignments?
Yeah.
12 assignments, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
I think we got that straight.
Okay, is, any other questions for, for this witness? If not, I guess you could call your next witness, counsel, or you wanna, you wanna take a, what time is it? Can you keep going? Keep plowing through.
Yeah, perfect.
All right, thank you.
The second witness is Tom Decker, and he's gonna play a dual role as the site engineer
You gotta be sworn in. Grab the mic.
I do. Thomas Decker, D-E-C-K-E-R.
I think we can take his qualifications.
We can, we can take his qualifications.
He's better enough.
Okay, Mr. Decker, do your qualifications?
We're good.
Okay, you accept a man's professional, you're a professional planner?
Thank you.
All right, if you could, Tom, just back up a little bit and?
Sure.
Describe the existing site conditions, and then describe how the advocates are incorporating this building into the existing shopping center.
Mr. Decker, you have a set for marking, exhibit marking, right? Okay.
Okay. What I'll start with is an exhibit titled Hillsborough Center Vicinity Aerial.
This is gonna be A5, for the record.
This is dated June 6, 2019. It is a Google aerial photo of the site, which is located in the middle, and then the surrounding, the surrounding area. Do you want me to enter them as we go, or?
Yeah.
On this exhibit, again, the, the shopping center is located in the middle, and then to the north, we have the Nelson Corner Shopping Center with ShopRite as its anchor. To the, to the east, we have a, it's a wooded area, a portion of tributary to the Royce Brook traverses in this rear area, and there is a residence set pretty far back from the development. You can't really even see it from the, the shopping center. To the south, we have the, again, we have the Royce Brook running along the southern perimeter, and then, on the other side of the Royce Brook is the back end of the Hillsborough Point Development. To the west, we have Route 206 running in a north-south direction. Opposite the site, on the other side of Route 206, to the northwest, we have the Bottle King Shopping Area, and then directly across is the, I believe the board has seen an application recently for another multi, multi-use development. That's the location of the existing site. The next exhibit, A6, is also a Google Earth imagery. It's titled Existing Hillsborough Center Aerial, June 6, 2019, and this shows the site as it currently exists. The site is located on Block 200.10, lots 5.01 and 5.02. It's in the Town Center District. This shopping center was originally approved and constructed, I believe, in the late 80s. It is accessed by a, by two driveways. To the south, coming from Route 206, traveling north, there is a right-in, right-out entryway. As you continue north, you come to a signalized intersection. That intersection has access to Bottle King to the west, and then the subject property to the east, with a connecting drive to the Nelson Corner Shopping Center to the, to the north. The drive, as currently exists, is a, basically a U-shape that traverses around the entire property, traveling to the rear. In the center of the site, we have the parking area, serving the existing retail. Currently, the existing buildings consist of, in the northeast corner, it's a daycare, it used to be an office, this is the building that we're demolishing. That's in the northeast area, and as you can see, it's, it's fairly well-developed, considerable amount of asphalt and sidewalk and amenities, and that is where the proposed site is going. Out on Route 206, we have the Wells Fargo Bank to the, in the western portion of the property, and then going clockwise, we have the strip mall where there's, we have the Chipotle, a few other restaurants. The fitness center is on the second floor of this building. As you come around, we have the, there's another retail portion at the northern section of the building I'm indicating, and then, as you work around, we have the veterinarian hospital, which was recently approved, and then we have the grocery store, the pad at our grocery store, which essentially occupies most of what was the old Stop &amp; Shop. Continuing around clockwise, in the southwest corner, we have Starbucks, which was just installed, built a few years ago, and that has been very successful. Right now, my understanding is, the center itself is at about 100% capacity. I believe they have one more tenant that is in the process of, of moving in, and then it will be 100% occupied, which, if anyone recalls, this shopping center was struggling significantly three or four years ago. So, my next, my next slide is?
Which we'll mark as A7?
Is A7.
Just describe it for the record.
This is the, it's titled a site plan exhibit. It's colorized, and it shows some of our landscaping. Again, this is to highlight the area of where the proposed improvements are gonna be located, which will be in the northeast corner. This is, all the improvements in here are essentially contained within the perimeter of what exists today. So, we're not looking to expand beyond the, that existing loop road that comes around the back. We're looking to reconfigure everything within that portion. So, it's already improved, we're just improving it in a different way. And you can see, let me see if I can get this. We've also provided some connectivity with sidewalks, which we had discussed at the informal. There are, there is a sidewalk network within the residential complex. There's sidewalks within that courtyard and landscaping, which are part of the amenities that the architect had, had described. And then, per discussions with Mr. Maskey, we've added in some pedestrian connectivity. You can see, on the plan, we have areas that, I'm just gonna zoom in on the exhibit. We have additional sidewalk areas, which are shown in yellow, so that the residential, the new apartment complex will be able to connect to the existing sidewalk in front of the, the shopping area to the north, travel along that area, come around to a crosswalk, and then continue to Route 206. Similarly, they can walk down to Starbucks, and essentially, there's a walking, a pedestrian path that goes around the perimeter of the parking lot, connecting all the shopping and retail areas, restaurants, to the apartment complex. So, as the architect had previously stated, while this is, you know, in a retail area, it does have that connectivity, so that people can walk out of their apartment and go get a cup of coffee, or go get a piece of pizza, you know, order a pizza and pick it up. It is very desirable. The next slide, and this will be Exhibit A8?
Yes, A8.
Okay.
Just describe it for the record.
Sure. What A8 is? What A8 is A8 is basically the landscape exhibit, or landscape plan contained in your plan set. And it focuses mostly on the proposed development. So I've zoomed in on that, that center image. What we have is, again, a 44-unit inclusionary multifamily residential building. It's three stories, 48 feet in height, as previously testified. I will say, with regards to the height, there was a question that came up as far as the height of the adjacent buildings relative to this. I'll also add that, keep in mind that those adjacent buildings are two-story. This is three-story as permitted by the zone. So you will be able, that's another story that's permitted above the others. So it will naturally be higher than the other buildings. The use is permitted as a conditional use, oh, I'm sorry. There's 44 units, 25% will be set aside. Total square footage of the building is 63,235 square feet over those three floors. The use is permitted as a conditional use, and as indicated in Mr. Maske's review, the project conforms with those conditions. The site will be improved, as I mentioned, with the walkways. As far as school bus, we will have, we anticipate having school-aged children in the complex. And we have, the applicant has discussed with the Board of Ed as far as bus pickup. And in the northwest corner, you'll see we have two handicap or ADA compliant parking spaces. Between those two spaces is a striped area. And then, it's kind of hidden by the landscaping in this image, but we also have a concrete pad adjacent to the sidewalk. This will be a location for children to gather as they wait for the bus. Buses will come in in a clockwise direction, so that they come in, they will be stopping with the doors facing those, the striping between the ADA parking spaces, so that the children do not have to walk in front of the aisle width to get to a parking stop. And then the bus will continue around the back of the shopping center and then out through the southern entrance. As indicated, we do have, per the ordinance, we've provided landscaping. We've provided adequate tree replacement per the township ordinance. We believe that the landscaping in here will be an enhancement from what currently exists. Our landscape architect worked with the applicant to come up with the sidewalk network and the landscaping, so that this does have a residential feel in a commercial setting. You know, we know that this is within a shopping center. We do want to keep this looking as residential as possible within its own setting. There is a trash enclosure that's proposed in the southeast corner. That trash enclosure will be for trash and recycling. It will be collected by a private hauler, the same hauler as collects the trash and recycling for the commercial facility. Lighting will be provided with LED lighting, consistent with the Town Center ordinance. They are residential in feel. And again, they will be LED. Parking, there was some discussion with regards to parking previously. The residential units will require 85 parking spaces. We do have 12 garages. We have 47 parking spaces in the back portion here, including the two ADA compliant. Those spaces will be assigned to units within the building, so that each apartment within this complex will have at least one parking space to the rear of the building for access. Because we do have 47 spaces, there's 44 units. So each one of those will be assigned, so that when someone comes home from work, they know that there's a guaranteed parking space for their unit, at least one. 26 parking spaces will be in the general parking area for the shopping center. Overall, currently, we have a surplus of 10 parking spaces, which I'll touch on again when I get to the fire official's review letter. I believe Mr. Euro had a comment in his review with regards to parking being required within 100 to 300 feet of the building. I took a look, and there are, within the common parking area, there are 95 unrestricted parking spaces within the shopping center that are within 300 feet of the building. And by non-restricted, I mean, they're not ADA spaces, they're not designated for the veterinarian hospital. They have two. There are a few spaces for the restaurants for pickup areas. So excluding those, there are 95 parking spaces available in the general parking. And again, there's only, we only need 26 out there for the ordinance requirement. As was indicated previously, we are talking about some wayfinding signs and monument signs. While we're on Exhibit A8, the intent is, the monument signs, which, again, are, they're relatively small. I believe they're only three feet high. They're relatively small in size. We're looking to put one of those in the southeast corner of the complex, the residential building, just behind the sidewalk, so that it fronts into the shopping center, so that if you're parked in the shopping center, you have a sign in there that directs you to the residential area. So it would be basically where there's the bend in the access drive coming around in that green space. That would be one of the lower monument signs. I'm going to go back to Exhibit A7, which was the overall. Zoom in here a little bit. Okay, the wayfinding signs, as you come in from the controlled intersection at the north, you would travel in, and you have two options as you come in here. You either make a right that goes into the main shopping center, or you continue straight to the loop that goes around the property. We would propose putting in a sign in this intersection, basically directing traffic that is trying to find the apartment complex to continue straight. So that they're not making the right into the shopping center. They continue straight and go back to the apartment. Similarly, where we have the, when you come in from the south, we would also have signage along that drive directing vehicles to travel to the rear and around the shopping center to get to the apartment complex. And we will certainly show those locations on the revised plans for your professionals to review going forward. From an impervious coverage standpoint, there were some comments in Mr. Euro's review letter with regards to stormwater management and so forth. What we've done is, we took a look at the development or the improvements that were there pre-Starbucks, when it was originally approved in the late 80s and what had been there since that time. Before Starbucks was put in, the impervious coverage on the lot was at 47.55%. After, when we came in for Starbucks, we actually decreased the amount of impervious to 46.75%, okay? Which decreased the total impervious by about .14 acres. Proposed, we're adding back in some impervious coverage, but we're still below what the original pre-Starbucks number was. So we're, before Starbucks, we were at 47.55%. We are now at 46.96%. So we're still about 4,600 square feet less than what it was before Starbucks. So, looking at it from an impervious standpoint and the stormwater management facilities, there really isn't going to be any change in the stormwater runoff from the site, because we have not increased the impervious. And it's already been functioning with these stormwater management basins since the project was originally installed. Just for the board's information, the stormwater management is taken care of in two surface detention basins. One is in the southeast, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of the property, fronting out on 206. And then the other one is a basin in the northeast section, again, a surface basin. You can't really even see it from the shopping center, because it drops down in elevation and the trees have grown in. There are also two underground stormwater management vaults. They're large concrete vaults. One is located down by the Starbucks. That's the larger of the two. That underground vault was cleaned out as part of the Starbucks application. That was one of the requirements, was that it be, any sediment or debris collected in there be cleaned out. There is another underground basin, which is in the southeast corner, behind the grocery store. There was a comment in Mr. Euro's letter with regards to cleaning out the detention basins. That is a requirement now that DEP has of the municipalities. The applicant will do that. They will clean the basins out, maintain them, both the surface and underground. That would be a condition of any approval and going forward. This facility predates the requirement that DEP had for operations and maintenance manuals for stormwater management. As part of this application, and as requested by Mr. Euro, we will prepare a maintenance manual for those basins, so that going forward, there are guidelines for how those basins need to be maintained. And the township has an ordinance that requires annual reporting. The method of that reporting and so forth will be contained in that manual. So this project will actually help benefit the stormwater, because now we're going to have to maintain the system. And those guidelines will be in place.
Tom, if you go back to the parking, I think you had to provide testimony in terms of guest parking also?
I'm sorry.
It was Mr. Euro's letter.
That would be
Oh.
Page three, item number seven, that can be disregarded.
Okay. So I didn't report.
Guest parking is already included in the overall parking requirement of the RSIS. It was misnoted by my office.
Okay.
As discussed, we have some relief that we're requesting. We have the height variance, and we'll start off with that. 45 feet is permitted, where we're proposing 48 feet. Prefer testimony from the architect as to the driving force behind the additional three feet. One of the aspects of this property is that the topography is already set. There's nothing we can really do to make any adjustments to the topography. And what happens is, the driveway, or the drive in the rear, drops about five feet over the course of that building. So what happens is, we have more reveal in the southeast corner of the building than we do in the northeast corner. So that contributes to the building height. And unfortunately, on a virgin piece of ground, we can grade around it and we can give it a nice even pad. Unfortunately, we're bound by what's there. We have a driveway in the back that has a set slope. We have to deal with that. So that was one of the other factors that played into the building height. So in our opinion, it's de minimis in comparison to the overall development. The building is set back about 600 feet from Route 206. So from a visual standpoint from 206, you're really not going to perceive that three-foot difference in the building height, as was shown on the previous exhibits. It does fit in with the character of the adjacent buildings. The relief also allows for the garage parking in the rear, nine-foot ceilings. It does, again, it does help, it's a good civic design in that it complies or conforms to the surrounding it surrounds.
May I ask a question at this point, just for clarification?
Sure.
On the height? As you say, there's a change in topography. Are all four building pods and are all facades at 48 feet, or are some less than 48?
I believe some areas, depending on where you are at the building, some are less than 48. 48 is our
That's the highest point. So there are some roofs, depending on which facade or which elevation you're measuring at, that are less than 48?
Correct. The purposes of the MLUL are advanced by promoting a desirable visual environment through good civic design and efficient use of the property. We've been able to fit in a 44-unit apartment complex on a portion of the site that, quite honestly, I don't know that it's been very successful either as an office building or as a daycare facility in the past. So we're making that more efficient. The negative criteria, I believe, is satisfied. This application is for a use that's permitted, that's in an area that was zoned specifically for inclusionary housing. The proposed relief is de minimis and negligible from a street view, as I said earlier. It will help, I believe, maintain the viability of this shopping center and neighboring shopping centers by having clientele, customers, that are within walking distance. You know, this is a different type of resident than a single-family residential homeowner. These are renters who are looking for these type of amenities. And I can tell you, having two sons in their early 20s, this is exactly what they're looking for. I don't see that there's any detriment to this surrounding area, and I believe it provides a better, a good zoning alternative in this section of the property. We also have design waivers, as we're indicated at the beginning of the meeting. First waiver is for the size of the parking spaces. The township ordinance requires 10-by-20 parking. However, the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards supersede the township ordinance. So they're really the ones that govern as far as parking spaces. So the parking spaces to the rear of the building have been designed in compliance with the RSIS requirements of nine-foot by 18-foot spaces, which is what they permit. So that, but that would be a waiver from the township ordinance. We're also seeking a waiver for the aisle width. The township ordinance requires an aisle width of 30 feet, whereas we have 25-foot proposed. 25 feet is consistent with the other aisle widths and travel ways throughout the existing shopping center. So we're staying consistent with that, and this is a waiver that often comes up before the board. We also are looking for a waiver from the 30-foot wide buffer, from the parking to adjoining properties. As I stated earlier, the improvements are confined to within the limits of the existing improvements of the shopping center. In the northern section where we have parking, we have a parking space that is 10 feet from the property line. This is consistent with what the current improvements are on the site. So we're not, it's not as though there's an existing 30-foot buffer that we're impeding on. We're already, the site already is in violation of that buffer requirement. So we'd be seeking a waiver based on the existing situation. Also, that Also, that that northern portion of the site basically is wooded, and then you have Nelson's Corner to the the back end of Nelson's Corner Shopping Center. And I'll, just for clarity, I will flip back to, nope, actually, it was on, it was on the same exhibit. We just zoomed in. Nelson's Corner is to the to the north. There's a wooded area. It's the back end of Nelson's Corner, so the additional buffer really isn't buffering it from any residences or any other, the frontage of any other commercial use. There is one other waiver that we will have to, that we'll address, and this this came up as a result of our meeting with the Environmental Commission with regards to the stream and wetlands to the rear. And in that regard, I'm going to, this will be exhibit A nine?
A nine, yes.
What A nine is, is it's titled Stream Corridor Exhibit. We met with the Environmental Commission. I'll go through their letter in a moment. And one of the things that they asked for us to do was, they were asked for us to do a few things. One was to submit to DEP a, for an LOI, which we have. That submission has gone out. I believe earlier this week, we provided a copy of the submission letter to Mr. Maskey for his records to demonstrate that we've satisfied that checklist item. So that submission has been sent to DEP. It's a freshwater wetlands letter interpretation for a footprint of disturbance. And what that means is that the application is going in just for the subject property area, the disturbed area that's being created for this particular project. So it's not an LOI for the entire eighteen-acre property, just for this one-point-seven, one-point-nine acre portion in the back. One of the other things that the Environmental Commission asked for us to do was to take a look at the flood hazard, the flood plain, the hundred-year flood plain, which we took a look at the FEMA mapping. This is not a delineated stream, a DEP delineated stream. That was one of the other questions that the Environmental Commission had asked. So they did not have a delineation, so we went to the FEMA. What you see on the exhibit, this dark shaded area is the extent of the hundred-year flood plain, hundred-year flood hazard. Now, if I zoom in, this solid dark line here is approximately the location of the stream based on the contours. We believe that this is a, that the that the stream here would have a fifty-foot riparian buffer as required by DEP. That's this dash, this first dashed line. And as you can see, this dashed line stays entirely outside of our proposed development. So certainly, DEP will identify if there is an issue with that as part of the LOI application because they look at not only the wetlands, but they'll see if there's any other environmental regulation that applies. We are outside of that riparian buffer. What does infringe on the site is the township hundred-and-fifty-foot stream corridor. That hundred-and-fifty feet is measured from the stream, and that is this other dashed line. And that currently exists. And it currently exists through the through the shopping center and through what is already We're seeking a waiver from the stream corridor requirement because the, there really is, it's already impacted, the resource value within that area that the town would be looking for in a stream corridor easement already doesn't exist. And by improving in that area, we're we're really not impacting that. As I said, we're still at a net decrease in impervious. The other thing I will say is that we're at a net decrease in impervious overall, but we've also decreased the amount of parking and pavement out here. And but the building area has increased from what was there. Buildings are considered clean runoff because it's roof runoff. So we've increased the amount of clean runoff and decreased the amount of dirty runoff. So we are having a beneficial impact in that we will have less road sediment and and so forth from the parking area. So we would request the, a waiver from the the stream corridor. As I said, it's already improved.
Just a question on the stream corridor.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So the the waiver you're requesting for the township stream corridor would only apply to what's existing disturbed area now, that any portion of the township stream corridor that is not presently disturbed would be conserved?
Correct. Also, and also just as far as the existing improvements, I would also include the detention basin that's located in the northeast because that is situated within the corridor. So any improvements by way of maintenance that has to be done to the basin would still still need to be done, and that would be done in the in the stream corridor because I believe the stream corridor ordinance was after the development was originally designed and approved and.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was my next obvious question. But is that what you think?
Yeah, I mean, it, I believe I believe so. Otherwise, I would imagine that the the development that's there would have had to have already obtained relief from the stream corridor easement or stream corridor requirement. And if that was the case, we'd already have the relief in place.
Does anybody know that or is it something we're just going to assume?
No, but I.
We'd have to do a bit of research.
Yeah, but I believe I believe the stream corridor easement probably postdated a nineteen-eighty-seven, eighty-eight site plan.
When did our ordinance come out then?
I don't have the ordinance with me, but yeah, we'd have to check to see when the stream corridor ordinance was was put into place.
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think it goes back to the eighties.
Yeah. We weren't, we weren't thinking that far ahead back then.
Yeah.
I will also say, Delaware River Canal Commission is also has a stream corridor, and we have an application to them. We're going to have to address the same, the same situation in our response.
What's theirs? Is theirs a hundred or?
I believe theirs is a hundred.
Okay.
But in any case, even a hundred feet is going to touch into the site. So we're going to have those same conversations with them. Delaware River Canal Commission, just like any other outside agency, would be a condition of any approval that the board would grant, and we'd certainly comply with that.
Yeah, I mean, there was a, there was quite extensive letter from DRCC, so so you do have to address all of those topics with them.
Yeah, and they they had, they had similar comments to Mr. Euro's letter with regards to impervious coverage.
Right.
And we need to provide clarification to them that, you know, where we are on impervious and so forth. And obviously, we have to, we have to comply and satisfy them. I will say that typically, they are more stringent in their stormwater management review than other agencies. So if if we can pass their muster, we're in good shape.
So that would have to be a condition of approval then? Okay.
So the next, that that pretty much covered, that pretty much covered the environmental.
Yeah, the only other thing I saw on there was the correct-to-square footage on the EIS.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll do that. That's, that's fine.
And then, yeah, Mr. Euro's comments were were pretty similar to DRCC Environmental Commission in terms of environmental.
Correct.
They had, they all had common themes.
Yes, and we'll certainly comply with those. Now, the next exhibit I have in discussion is for the the May twenty-third review letter from Chris Winiger, the fire, Chief Fire Marshal.
That'll be exhibit A-ten.
Sorry, I'd like to interrupt one more time. Thanks to Google. Stream corridor protection ordinance was added in two thousand and five.
Okay.
So.
So this was pre.
It's a pre-existing condition.
What was, I mean, what was Hillsboro before that? Was it a hundred or?
I don't know if they had a stream corridor ordinance before that.
And I should know that, but I don't know at the top of my head.
Okay, so the the May twenty-third letter from the fire official, and that was exhibit A?
A-ten.
And we're also going to add another exhibit. We had a meeting with the fire marshal, and we have an exhibit titled the Fire Marshal Exhibit, and that will be A-11. We also have copies of that as well. Where's that? Oh, that's one of your, oh, that's A-ten?
This is A-ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. A-ten, A-ten is the Fire Marshal Exhibit. I thought you were referring to his letter. Okay, so this is A-ten that I have up on the screen now. We had a meeting with the fire official. I'll go through his, his comments. We've come to an agreement with him. For the most part, we've got some shifting in fire, fire hydrant locations, which, I'll zoom in on this a little bit. So this was a red line plan. So the fire hydrant's being located, we had it on the other side of the road. It's being located closer to the building along with the proposed FDC. That's per his comment. We'll certainly provide, you know, final design, incorporate this in the final design, including all details. He also asked for fire zones in the shaded shaded red areas around the, in the front of the building, at the the bend in the in the parking area, and then also to the rear on the opposite side of the drive, basically a no-parking fire zone. And then we also, we'll also have the building addresses on the, at each entry into the building around the perimeter. The biggest comment that he had was his fifth bullet point, where he was requesting a twenty-five-foot-wide emergency access, stabilized access to the south. And I have that on exhibit A-ten. That's highlighted in this green area here. After discussion with him, what he will accept is stabilized grass. So this stabilized turf, so this is, I'm sure Mr. Euro's familiar with the the product. They're basically plastic rings in a, in a mat that that has, it's, it's on a, on a stone base. It's porous, it's pervious, it has a stone base. It's infilled with soil and then seeded. So it looks just like lawn. There's none, it doesn't have the concrete blocks that you may be familiar with, so it'll look just like grass, but it'll be stabilized for a fire truck to access that area. And we're agreeable to that. The sidewalk would need to get shifted a little bit because we want to put the sidewalk more in the center of that access so that it didn't have the sidewalk should the fire truck need to go in there, doesn't get damaged significantly. But he also asked that we put in an additional striped area for no parking, which is just north of the dumpster, which we can do. The only thing is that we lose two parking spaces there. So we lose those two parking spaces, but again, we have supplemental parking spaces in the rest of the lot. So that would take our nine, or our ten additional parking spaces and knock that down to eight. So we're still in compliance, but we would have this striped as an area so that the fire truck could access. He's also asked that we put in two bollards and chain, which I have identified with the a red dashed line so that vehicles wouldn't go in, in there. That's, that's in the the eastern portion of that access drive. So that, again, we met with the fire official. He's satisfied with these revisions, but it does go back to the parking, and we'll also have to work with your professionals in modifying the landscaping in that area because we are going to have to push around some trees and so forth. But we do have room to continue foundation plantings around the building and also some addition, you know, move the the other plantings down to the southern end of that. So we would be looking at that as a, as a change that would be done as part of resolution compliance, again, if the board approves the application. So that that addresses the fire official's letter. I can go through Mr. Maskey's. I believe several items were already discussed.
Counselor, before, before we proceed, I'm going to ask, let's take a five-minute break. Are you all right there or? All right, let's just take a five-minute break and then we'll continue. All right?
Yeah.
So we'll adjourn for, ready, Mr. Euro?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we are back in session.
Thank you. Tom?
Okay. I'll go through the professional letters, and as typical, I'll only touch on the items that, you know, I think we we need to discuss. Everything else, you know, I'll go through and, you know, we'll just comply with, and so we'll keep things moving. So Mr. Maskey's review letter. Again, we've addressed the item number three-point-two. We've addressed the variance. We've discussed that for the height. We've also discussed in, under paragraph, under section four for parking. We've discussed the waivers for the parking lots.
Just clarification on the parking waivers. You do not need a waiver for the residential parking space size because you do meet RSIS. It's the aisle width and the thirty-foot wide buffer.
Okay. Pedestrian circulation. We discussed the pedestrian circulation, and we're in agreement. We'll provide signage as we did for Starbucks at pedestrian crossings to signify those. The the crosswalks are also proposed to be striped consistent with the current parking lot.
Are you requesting waivers?
I guess that would be a waiver then.
Well, there's two in, in, under five-point-one, pedestrian circulation, there are two potential waivers pointed out in terms of the treatment of the crosswalk.
Correct. Those would be additional waivers.
Why? Can you explain why you're asking for waivers?
They're looking to keep the, well, let me back up to, you had another comment with regards to providing a rail or fence. And let me, I'm going to go back to the one exhibit. This is the overall site planning exhibit, I think. I forget which, which letter this one was.
A-seven.
Okay, A-seven. And I'll zoom in on the section that Mr. Maskey is talking about. Again, we're looking at the pedestrian sidewalk, and this sidewalk along the entrance drive, the northern entrance drive that signaled, Mr. Maskey has asked that we install a, a railing or fence of, I'm imagining, three, four-foot high, nothing, nothing significant, between the sidewalk and the travelway. So it, it helps prevent a pedestrian from stepping off the curb, if you will, into the entrance drive coming into the shopping center. So, and we agreed to do that along that that stretch for safety reasons. So we will provide that as requested. Yes, and then, as noted in the paragraphs for section one-eighty-eight dash one-seventy-five point one-H and point one-K, requires that the concrete sidewalks be pigmented concrete with a broom finish. The applicant is proposing a concrete sidewalk consistent with the sidewalk that is throughout the shopping center complex, which is a typical concrete sidewalk. They're requesting the waiver, again, for consistency with what exists. Similarly, with the crosswalks, there are existing crosswalks within the site, and they're, they request the waiver from delineating in change in texture material accordingly.
What about the, the crosswalk, basically from Chipotle crossing over towards 206? That's kind of a highly trafficked area. Can you enhance that crosswalk at least?
I think we can, I think we can do something there to enhance that, make it more visible. Again, we were also adding signage, but I would agree. Again, we were also adding signage, but I would agree that that's probably your crosswalk of biggest concern. And, you know, I'm getting a nod from the applicant that that won't be a problem.
Okay.
Okay. But otherwise, we would request waivers throughout the rest of the...
I guess while we're on that particular crosswalk, some perhaps additional signage or something. Some people are pulling in and going to make the right turn, some sort of pedestrian warning sign, pedestrian crossing, something of that sort.
Yes. Yeah. That could have a, you know, a more... a sign that has a more presence, if you will, rather than the smaller signs that we've had in other areas of the complex. And we'll certainly work with Mr. Euro as far as... and Mr. Maski as far as signage appropriate with the MUTCD manual and so forth for this. But I would agree that is a... that's going to be your highest traffic crosswalk.
Yeah, no, and we were even talking on conceptual design. We were talking about the different traffic flow, going straight to the apartment, coming out of the apartment, or, you know, coming out of the mall itself. So to kind of delineate those areas and also work with that flow of all the traffic.
Yeah.
I know those were things we talked about.
Yes. And that's why we're utilizing as much of the existing walkways in front of storefronts to for... kind of force people to walk in front of storefronts to use them. And then, from a topographic standpoint, we do have a ramp at where the Chipotle is. So there's a ADA compliant ramp. So when you cross... when you're coming up this sidewalk across the parking area, you come to a landing here, and there's a ramp that comes up to the existing sidewalk by Chipotle. So then you would walk around at Chipotle parking lot... or sidewalk and then cross because this bottom corner, this southwest corner, is a couple of feet higher than the roadway adjacent to it, and then it tapers down the grade to the north.
I know we were talking, like, if you're coming down that road, which is not a typical traffic flow right now, which, you know, if you're coming out of the mall, you typically don't look to the right to see any traffic coming down because it just wasn't...
Because it wasn't there before?
Wasn't there before. So I know we had talked about that, but I don't know if you had a chance to think about that.
It's very difficult with the way that the site is already configured to do anything geometrically.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can certainly sign. We can provide striping. You know, one of the things that, again, I think that has been experienced in the town is that because the park... because this shopping center has been underutilized in the past several years, and now that it's vibrant again, and you have occupancy, you're seeing more vehicles there than you may have grown accustomed to over the past few years. But we can certainly work with the board professionals to see if there's, you know, the best way that we can design this crossing for safety standpoint.
Do you consider like a speed bump or...
I don't know. I'm not sure if that's appropriate at that point.
At that location, a speed bump because you're turning? I don't know that that...
Yeah. Just some enhancement, though, in terms of material or striping and particularly signage so that people know it is a pedestrian crossing, same when they're coming out of the shopping center, to, you know, make... realize that there's going to be traffic coming from the right where maybe they're not... it wasn't before.
Right.
But I think in concert with Mr. Euro, we can work out an appropriate signage program for that particular intersection.
Okay.
Moving back to Mr. Maski's letter. Item 5.2, we discussed signage. School bus stop, we discussed.
And you say you're getting a letter from the Board of Ed?
She sent us an email confirming it was okay. So I can just forward you the email?
Okay.
We discussed the dumpster location and access. It is... the dumpster is enclosed by a six-foot-high vinyl fence. There is landscaping on the three sides of it. We will have to make some modifications for... per the fire official, for the access that he wants there. There was also a request for a hose connection in that area. We can certainly provide a hose bid.
Okay. So you don't need a waiver from that first bullet, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Under six... all right. About the hours... the ordinance prohibits removal of trash between the hours...
We'll comply with that.
All right. Great.
The question on... this is 6.2. Again, this is with the dumpster. There's a chain-linked fence.
Yeah, just for the boards, perhaps Mr. Decker could point out on the site plan. When I was out doing a site inspection, at the rear of the retail stores, there is a dumpster which is not very well screened at all. There was trash on the ground. It would be right next to the residential component, so we're... I'm suggesting they treat it the same way they're treating the new dumpster area and screen it properly, perhaps fencing and landscaping. So you don't see it from the residential unit.
Yeah. I believe what you're discussing is either behind...
No, no, no.
Not behind the vet?
Behind the building with the gym in it.
Oh, up there?
Up at the top, yeah. Right where the residential interface is with the...
Oh, here.
Right there, there's a pretty junky trash compaction area with not... no enclosure, and it's right in your face as you walk out the residential building. So that should be treated the same way you're treating the other one.
I'm getting a nod from the applicant that we will...
Thank you.
We will take care of that.
And that's where the bus stop is going to be pretty much, too. All right. More reason.
Yes. So that'll be enclosed with a similar six-foot-high vinyl fence with a gate.
Now, just on the signs, I'd just like to talk about that a little bit, just so we're on the same page.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out a way to do this so that they don't, you know, have to return to the board with a full signage. I would suggest perhaps a condition would be that the applicant submit a signed package, at least for the new signs, to myself and to Mr. Euro, and if it does comply with the ordinance, then fine. If it does need variances or waivers of some sort, then they would have to come back. The full manual would not necessarily be a condition of this approval if the board chose, but strongly suggested that in the near future, a full manual. That would perhaps reflect what the new signage is coming to be.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. That's agreed. Stream corridor and conservation areas, we discussed. We discussed the landscaping. It was designed and signed and sealed by a registered landscape architect. The applicant has also agreed with maintaining the existing trees and vegetation. If there's dead trees, diseased trees, they will be replaced.
So you're agreeing with my last comment that you've got to go through the whole site and freshen it up?
Right.
Yeah. Yes. We understand that.
Could you just, for a second, review the tree mitigation? If I'm not mistaken, if I read the plans, the calculations correctly, you do not need any waivers for tree mitigation?
We do not.
You'll have enough replacements throughout the site?
Correct. Correct. We've actually put in more trees than we need.
Thank you.
There was discussion by the architect with regards to the green technology. Architect provided the testimony with regards to architectural and site design overlay zone. And I believe that was all of Mr. Maski's letter. I did have... moving on to Mr. Euro's letter dated May 31st. Mr. Euro and I did have an opportunity to discuss, go through his letter briefly this afternoon. So I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. I believe I've addressed everything on page two via testimony. Page three, I believe we've addressed everything, items seven through 14, or most of them through testimony. If we haven't, we will comply with the comments. They're detail and oriented, and we will comply with those, their planned revisions. Traffic and circulation. Gary Dean has prepared a traffic report that was submitted. Essentially, the... his opinion was that the... his report indicated that there would be less traffic generated from the site during peak hours. With regards to item number three at the bottom, it is a... the proposed bus stop is a school bus stop, not a transit drop-off location. Item number four, we discussed the wayfinding signs. Item five, we reviewed the fire official's letter. For D, as I testified previously, we have a net reduction in impervious from the pre-Starbucks. Mr. Euro and I had discussed this earlier, I believe. Item D, I've either provided through testimony or we will comply. Specifically, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and 12 are just items that we would comply with. Those are detail and oriented. Everything else, I believe, was testified to. Item number 13, with regards to the proposed sanitary sewer flows. We've been in contact with the Hillsborough Township MUA, and I'll certainly provide these figures to Mr. Euro. The apartments will generate 8,700 gallons per day. The existing facility that we're... that's being demolished had 1,080 gallons per day, so we have a net increase of 7,620 gallons per day. That's below the 8,000 gallons per day threshold that would require a TWA, and Scott Lynn from the Hillsborough MUA has said that he does not believe we need a TWA application. Mr. Euro has identified that we may need one for rerouting the eight-inch sewer line. We'll certainly work with the Hillsborough Township MUA, and should a TWA application or permit be required, it's required, and we'll obtain that as a condition of approval. Item number 15, we'll comply with. Item number 16 and 17 with regards to removal of the existing water vault and electrical vault. Those are being replaced. We propose to replace those with a utility room that is attached to the building itself. So water and electric will come in there. That obviously needs to be coordinated with New Jersey American Water, Subcode officials, the electrical company, and so forth. So we'll abide by whatever those utility companies require. Eighteen through 21, we'll comply with. Item number one, under landscape and lighting, we've already requested the waiver for the buffer requirement. Item number two doesn't require response. Three through seven, we'll comply with. With regards to number eight, regarding the hours of operation of outdoor lighting throughout the property, that would be at dusk to dawn. With the residential component, we need to provide security for the residents. We can't control when they come and go, so we need to have the security lighting for them. So that'll be a dusk-to-dawn situation. Environmental, we've discussed item number one. Item number two, we will comply with as far as taking additional caution during the construction process to minimize disturbance to surrounding wildlife. Item number three, request will-serv letters. We will follow up with the utility companies. However, the site is already served. We would anticipate that there would be no problem in serving the site. On to page eight. I believe we provided testimony with regards to items one to... one through four, five through 16, we will comply with. And the last page, page nine. Item number 17, as far as loading and deliveries, trash and recyclables, it'll be as is typical for residential apartment complex. Loading will probably be primarily when people are moving in, moving out, furniture deliveries, appliance deliveries, things like that. Trash and recyclables, again, they'll be taking their own trash out to the dumpsters for disposal. And as far as items 18 and 19, we will comply with those.
Mr. Decker, just real quick, as I was looking at the site plan, the parking spaces that are behind the veterinary facility, can you just describe how those are being assigned?
Sure. You're talking about this area back here?
Correct.
Okay.
That parking field.
There are... as part of the veterinarian lease agreement and as approved by the Board of Adjustment when we were here, these five parking spaces that are outlined in a dash line, heavy dash line, are reserved for the vet as well as the spaces on the other side. These three spaces in this area to the right, those will be designated for the apartment. Okay. So those are included in those 47, now 45 because we're reducing the two from the fire officials. So those will be included in the spaces that are assigned specifically to units within the apartment complex.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes...
Okay. There's no other questions from the board, then we'll just... it's already open to the public, right, Counsel? We didn't close it, though. Does anybody from the public have any questions for the engineer?
And planner needs to...
Yes. And planner, sorry. All right. If there's no questions, then we will make a motion to close the public?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel, you have any other professionals?
No, that was essentially all of our testimony.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I thought there was a traffic... someone was going to testify to the traffic.
You got to come up.
No, actually, I said that if a question arose that only he was able to answer or was qualified to answer, he would come up. But we submitted a traffic impact statement, which basically said that we're going to have less traffic with issues than we would with the retail, and so there'd be no negative impact with respect to traffic.
I mean, we could open it back up if you have a question, and you could come up and ask it, and then if the traffic consultant needs to answer it, we could certainly have him answer your question if you want. Is that...
I'll move to open it back up.
Okay. So we will move to open to public. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sir. Come on up, please. You state your name and address.
Joseph Maloney, 27, Stonewick Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Was it considered that the road, basically, that goes around this new proposed development from Chipotle all the way around the development, travel in a one-way circular...
We did look at that. And this development was not designed as a one-way route back in the 80s when it was originally done, and we've maintained that. The rear of this shopping center back here requires trucks to basically come around in this direction and back in to this parking space. And then there's also loading in this area, which requires vehicles in order to make those turning movements and so forth, be able to traverse in the opposite direction. So we're kind of bound by the existing operation of the loading areas to the rear of the property. So we couldn't... again, we had our hands tied a lot in the actual design and what we could and couldn't do. So that's why we could not do a one-way.
Well, certainly, your trucks and/or any larger-sized vehicle can basically K-turn back out in. My point is that if you make that one way, you'll have a traffic flow basically from the north part of the property back down to the south. And if they need to access any of the retail, they can certainly do that in front of the Indian restaurant right there. And if they need to get out north to 206, they can continue and exit on the right end, right out only by Starbucks. My point here is that to the west there, as you enter Nelson's Corner, that is what I'll call a pinch point. And there is already existing island right there by the Wells Fargo Bank. The sightlines are absolutely horrible, and not anyone's fault. Truckers get lost, and you're making... basically, they make forty... with a 45-foot or 53-foot tractor-trailer, they're entering into your property, and they're making a... they're entering into your property, and they're making a left into Nelson's Corner and tying up just about everyone. My fear is that once we occupy, this was with residents, and they join the morning rush hour, they'll come, they'll come in basically from the east to the west, thus causing even more congestion at that pinch point.
Come on, Gary Dean. When did we first have him this morning?
Do you have to swear a man, or?
Yeah, I do.
Let's swear.
Yes, I do. Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. I'm a principal with Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville, and I've appeared numerous times before this board related to traffic matters. By way of background, and board members may not know this, I was the original traffic engineer for the shopping center when it was Bocina Development, and I designed the light at Route 206. And, and the board, and, and sir, you should be aware that when this shopping center application was first proposed, there was no connection to Nelson's Corner. And at the request of this board to provide some relief for the traffic on Amwell Road in particular, for residents that want to continue south on 206, that the, we'll say, internal connection from Nelson's Corner to this ring road was developed. You know, there are alternatives. I mean, one, the applicant could close it, but I think that's contrary to sound planning. I think the time in the morning when the residents are leaving, we want them to have direct access to that signal. The projected traffic flows, even though it's 44 units within a single peak hour, are probably around 18, maybe 20 vehicles. So it's one car every three minutes. It's not a very busy site, assuming none of them go to the south. So logically, and, and for the highest degree of safety, for retail customers within the parking lot, we don't want to have this become a one-way loop where those residential units who simply want to go to the light have to go all the way around clockwise to Starbucks, or cut through the middle of the shopping center to go out to 206 and go south. That just isn't really good planning. So I, I am intrigued, however, by your concern relative to site distance, and I will say, on behalf of the applicant, if there's vegetation that has become overgrown at that entrance, that in some way is obscuring site distance, between Mr. Decker, myself, Mr. Euro, we can look at that a bit more closely to improve sightlines. And, and I think that's probably a, a valid observation. I haven't seen it myself, but we'll look more closely at it. So I hope that answers your concern. But directing that traffic to the south just is, imagine living there, and you had to circulate all the way through that. It, it really is not good for anyone.
Personally, I wouldn't mind traveling the additional quarter mile rather than face bus traffic, school bus traffic, rather than have poor sightlines. Basically, where that little island is right there, it's overgrown pine trees, and, and the sightline traveling north within the property to exit onto Route 206 north, you have to stop. Well, there's a stop sign there, but you can't actually, it's not a good sight.
Okay, but that's why I said, we will look at those sightlines, and, and if there's some selective thinning and vegetation pruning that, that's appropriate, we'll certainly address that.
Would you consider having all bus traffic and, and large trucks also exit, as I suggested, from going north to south? At least that way, your, your truck traffic, your bus traffic can go in a circular pattern.
That, that's how the site is designed. You're correct. They will be doing that.
Okay, and the enforcement of that?
If you heard Mr. Decker's testimony, that the buses come in traveling in a clockwise direction so that the students are picked up on the passenger side of the bus. That bus is not going to back up and make a K-turn or U-turn to leave the site. They will continue around the easterly and then southerly sides of the retail building to proceed directly out either to Route 206 and continue north, or in the access aisle between the Wells Fargo and, and just come up outside of the parking lots, stop at the stop sign, turn left, and then continue out to the light. But, but that's, that's simply just the size of the vehicles and the fact that they won't be backing up on site.
And the disposal trucks and other delivery trucks, could they also travel in a north-to-south circular direction?
I, I, that's a very low frequency volume, and I don't, I don't know that they wouldn't. But I don't know that they need to be directed in that, in that direction.
Could we have signage basically instructing truck, truck traffic to exit there?
I, I, I don't think that that's necessary, in my opinion. The, the trucks generally picking up refuse, even making deliveries, are off-peak. They're not coming in at AM rush hour or PM rush hour. And, and I think that that, we wouldn't want to put that kind of restraint on, on good circulation.
Quite honestly, if you look at where the dumpsters are situated, I would, if I was the driver, I would come in from the north and loop around and pick up the trash and enter out the south. Anyway, I don't, I don't think that I need to be told that. I think that that would be something that I would just do in, in general, because of the way the dumpsters are. So I, I don't think you need signage there. I think that's probably what they're doing already.
I hedge my response only because I don't know personally whether they're rear pickup or front pickup refuse trucks. If they're front pickup, then absolutely correct, they would continue to the south.
Yeah, unless, unless you're going to go south, then you go up to the light, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair, can I have a follow-up question for Mr. Decker and possibly Mr. Dean?
Absolutely.
Goes to the deliveries and the loading on the overall commercial center. Do we have any idea when that occurs? And I'm particularly concerned about, as these trucks travel in the clockwise direction, you're going to have delivery trucks, larger tractor-trailers possibly passing the residential units. Maybe something needs to be put in there, lease agreements that, hey, there will be truck traffic because you do have an active commercial center. We don't want the township to be getting calls that, you know, you got hearing-backup signals, et cetera. Again, I don't know what the delivery patterns are for that, that commercial center directly to the south.
Yeah, the applicant can, would agree to put something in their lease agreements with each of the renters that, obviously, I think they know they're in the middle of a commercial area, but if they don't, we'll make sure that's in the lease agreement.
We'll still get the telephone calls that there's a truck backing up at whatever time.
Right.
5:00 AM.
Thank you.
Well, I'll follow up on that, follow up. Is there a way to restrict deliveries so that they don't have trucks coming through there at, at night, for instance?
I don't think we can restrict the tenants who are already in there. They all have their leases and have, we don't run the operations of all of those different retailers. They're in, they're operating. I, I don't see how we reach them.
I mean, I guess if you get to the point where you're just getting so many complaints, the next time the lease comes up, you can, you can look at it.
Right.
But beside that, I, I don't know how to mitigate that. Right?
Okay.
Okay, anybody else from the public have any other questions? If not, then I need a motion to close to the public.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, counselor, you want to take us from here? No further testimony?
No, our case is closed.
Your case is closed? Okay.
All right. Chair would be looking for a motion, would be for the approval of this application, 19-PB07-MSPV, the granting of the requested variance and design waivers, as testified to by the applicant through its professionals. They put on Mr. Appel, excuse me if I get your names wrong, I wrote it down, now Mr. Decker, Mr. Dean, as well as the conditions placed on the record through the testimony and through the documents referenced in the memorandums of the, of the township professionals as well. Some of the waivers, including but not limited to, the parking width, the minimum setback of the parking that's, with, with adjacent to the residential, the sidewalk and crosswalk design standards, and some of the conditions, including but not limited to, obviously, all those testified on the record, but signs being approved by the professionals, a signed package, that the garages will be assigned to units, that there will be a maintenance manual for the basins located on the property, as well as all the other compliance that was testified to with all the professionals' reports, as well as the other outside agencies as identified throughout the proceedings. So with all those conditions in place and on the record and testified to, with all those in place, we could, we can move that, we can move it if you wish.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Okay, I have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
The hashtag?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel.
Next meeting.
Just a reminder, the next meeting is June 13th, and we do have applications.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.